And it's our, it's our month in meeting. We'll begin tonight with public comment.
What's on the agenda?
We don't know what's on the agenda.
Um, the agenda goes as follows. There's public comment. Managers update on zoning administration issues, which is just his opportunity to report to us what's happening in the office related to zoning approvals and the process, um, application process. Managers update on building permitting issues, which is the same thing related to construction. Um, and I think we're particularly, they're beginning to look, the offices are beginning to look at how zoning and building permit applications are formatted and how the process is going to be taking place. Um, there's, we're not going to discuss the chapter, the review of chapter 124 amendment ideas because those are currently going to be reviewed by the planning commission at the upcoming meeting. Update on solicitors and ordinance amendment is also just for Sean to update us on if he has any news about that. And just to, I think it's just for us to say, just so that we can close this out, like, or, or, or keep it open, whether or not we, just to discuss whether or not the, um, the forming code logs is any more relevant, whether we need to add. And I don't, so that's, that's just for us to discuss later. So that's it. That's the agenda, just the meetings, announcement of the meeting date. The next meeting will be November 8th. Actually, that, that's election day. So that is canceled. No, excuse me, not November 8th. Jan-, um, this is November, you know, November, we're going to meet in the morning. Whatever the fourth Wednesday of November is, we'll, we'll meet at 8:00 AM. And then we'll wait again, we won't be, we won't be on, it'd be Thanksgiving, no, it's Wednesday.
It wasn't Wednesday.
It's Wednesday night, so it'd be the 20th. I mean, it's Wednesday morning, so it'd be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at 8:00 AM, and then January 25th at 8:00 AM. So that's the only other, that, otherwise, we don't have any other topics on the agenda.
Well, if there's public comment, you can comment on any topic that's related to building and zoning.
What Bob said. Yep.
You've got, you've got, you've got to start here with Kimberly.
Okay. I brought you some literature of something that I would just like to pitch to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm Kimberly Bezak, 237 Dudley, and I would just like to make a soft request to the Building and Zoning Committee to please consider in 2017 taking another look at accessory dwelling units. So I printed up a couple of things that I thought were especially interesting. If you look beyond this first little talking point thing I gave you, um, there's this really great map that we found online, um, because I wasn't sure if anywhere in Montgomery County had done something with regards to accessory dwelling units. I was shocked to find out that 19 townships or boroughs within the county already have accessory dwelling ordinances in place. So I feel like we're kind of behind the times on this, so we need to look at it again.
Look, so Lower Marion Township has it?
Yes.
Interesting.
So let me just talk really quick. I don't want to take up too much time, but.
It's a good comment.
Accessory dwelling units, for those of you that don't know, are independent housing units. Um, they're on a single family home or its lot. They're typically less than a thousand square feet. They're legally part of the same property, um, so it can't be bought or sold separately from the, from the main house. Sometimes I thought it was really cool, they're, they're referred to as echo houses, which the acronym for that is elder cottage housing opportunities. Um, and coming from my background as an occupational therapist, we're always focused on aging in place, aging in community, keeping people in the community as they get to a point where they can't maintain their big old house and their empty nesters. So something like an echo home is a really great opportunity to keep people in Norbert as they go through every chapter of their life. Um, so why is it a good idea for Norbert? I think looking at form-based zoning code, it's a really big missing piece of the puzzle. It would help facilitate, um, this emerging affordable housing crisis that Norbert is facing. And the walkability of Norbert really does naturally lend itself to accessory dwelling units. Um, you know, I'm in a position right now where my mother-in-law is a widow, she's a young widow. She lives in the big old house in New Jersey, she's ready to be done with it, but she's like, where do I go now? You know, as her need, um, start, like, if she would need some support in the future, it would be really great for Bill and I not to have to welcome her into our teeny 1,200 square foot house. If we had an opportunity to build something really small in the backyard over a garage, she could maintain some independence, support us a teeny bit, we could support her a teeny bit, um, and she could still utilize all the great amenities in Norbert. So, but it really not just for the elderly, I was thinking, um, just feedback I've gotten from friends in the community. I have a friend that has a son with disabilities, and she's like, when he gets to be an adult, I, you know, we would like to be able to facilitate some independence for him. So if he had an opportunity to still live on the property with a little bit of support, or even boomerang kids, you know, they go off to college, need to come back for a bit, they don't want to be in the house, they'd have a place to hang out in the backyard. So anyway, I just have some nice talking points here. For Lower Marion, Lower Marion really has a tight ordinance. They restrict it to, it has to be a relative, um, you can have no more than one to two people in the dwelling, and the person living there has to be six to two years old or older. So I think that, like I said, if you look at that map, it's really stunning how much the county already supports this, so I would just hope that in 2017, the committee can take another look at it, um, so.
Do you know, is there any way that you're going to enforce these, these age-relatedness?
So Lower Marion actually goes a step further. They require annual permitting. So on an annual basis, the property owner has to go down to the township and show proof that their dwelling is still meeting the requirement.
I see, so they show like who's the owner.
So on an annual basis, it's a permitting process, but I don't know if Cindy can add anything to it, but, um, I have a Google Drive folder full of documents that I've found, I'm happy to share if you would like me to, just let me know, but that's my piece that I would just like to pitch, so.
That's great. Thank you so much, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Um, is there any other public comments? Very fast.
I would like to follow up on Kimberly's presentation and I support her presentation 100%, both as a community rehab counselor and also because we've already been through taking care of three parents and had my parents here in Norbert, and I really do support being able to use those accessory buildings to have extended family, whether it's an adult child or parents. And I think it's a great idea. And feedback on that, I'd like to put a plug in for allowing homes to have screened-in porches, as Heidi Boise said, with transparency guidelines, because it's the same thing with the elderly. The idea is that is a screened-in porch that can be put on, that has a lot of visibility, it is a way for an elderly individual to be able to stay connected to the street. And also, and you can have some of the, you know, heating in the floor, and so that they can then stay connected to the street, it gives them another space. And I had, we had in our home on Landton Lane, we had a closed porch that also gave us a little overflow room when children are small. So I think it's a very valuable space for families with small children and for elderly. So I'd like to put a plug with that, too, but thank you for bringing that up, because I think it's important, and I hope it works out for your mother-in-law.
Yeah. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Cindy Ridgeway, and I live on Marion Avenue in Norbert, and I'm also here to kind of chime in about the accessory dwelling unit. Um, and, you know, as you guys know, I'm a Realtor, and over the past year, I've had several people approach me about trying to find creative solutions for aging parents who they want to be close by, um, and that kind of got me looking into this ordinance, this possibility. And like Kimberly, I was a little surprised, because we're pretty progressive, I thought, for a small town, that we didn't have something like this, but we've been working on the zoning for so long, it seems like this would be a nice addition to what we have. And there are, of course, some concerns, I think, that we just have to be mindful of, um, you know, limited to like a principal residence that's owner-occupied could kind of prevent there being, you know, investors coming in, buying a house, building a rental unit behind that kind of thing. So there are a lot of things you can do with the ordinance to kind of alleviate these concerns, but I think it's a wonderful solution, and I agree with Kimberly, we need to make room for people aging in places. This isn't just a town for people with small kids, it's a great town for people with small kids, but I think as our population ages, we need to be creative in finding solutions and, you know, let people know there's, um, and, you know, I don't know the perfect way, but I think it's definitely worth exploring and, you know, something I think we, that could add a lot to our town.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other public comments?
Can I just make, I said, I was pointing out, I said screened-in porches, I mean enclosed, so they could be, you know, three seasons, like last and screens.
Okay. And just, I'll just say, Terry, that there, that somebody, or maybe more than one person, wrote that idea really well, and it's included in the document that the planning commission has that they're taking under consideration. So I think that idea has been well articulated, and they're considering it, and I know that they did have, I know that they did have an alternative, like, that's a toggle, it can be turned on with standards, how it's done, and, and so it's just, so it's like, they sort of have that already, as opposed to the ABU, which they haven't yet, I don't, they may have considered it to some extent, but I'm not sure that they did yet.
It's on the list, it's on the list, but not quite presented as well as.
Okay. Well, you can also, yeah, thank you. Can you say your names?
Yes, yes, so, sorry, I was like, um, so I'm Nora DiCristofano, I live on 302 Dunlop Avenue, and very skinny home, it's got a nice driveway, and it has a garage for one car, we don't use it for a car. Um, and recently, my father passed away this past summer, and my mom, they lived in Florida, so now, you know, she's the only one down there, and, you know, I was really, when I just started thinking about, like, well, what are we going to do? We'd love for you to live, you know, close with us, or be a snowbird, you know, building something over my, you know, with my garage would be perfect, instead of having it attached to the homes, we'll probably do an addition to our house, since we have to, we're trying to grow this family, and still stay in Norbert. But it really astounded me when I actually decided to real estate myself, and I met another agent who was born and raised in Norbert, and she actually, I was just talking to her about it, and she was like, wow, she's like, I didn't know they didn't allow that, because there's tons of homes that I know that have had, you know, accessory dwellings, and maybe the borough just doesn't know about it, but, you know, if they're old parents and all that kind of stuff, so I'm coming here to say, you know, I don't want to be one of those people that just, you know, build something, I want it to be, you know, against, you know, with the rules and, you know, I want to do it the right way, so I want to be allowed to do that, and I want it to go sooner than waiting a few more years, or I'm going to have to pack up and go, and I don't want to do that, I want to stay here, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? No other, have seen no other public comments? Bob, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I do. Um, one little note, Sean Cartman, I think one of the things we did in the form code is we switched the term garage to accessory building with a concept, so that, is that accurate? So if we were to do this, that alleviates one big stroke that was in front of that. Personally, I would love to see us do this as soon as possible, so I would ask like other committee members to decide to the planning commission to look at, and, you know, I don't know what their, you know, one of the things I want to talk about is what's on their plate, but this one is something that I personally would like, you know, a little bit for selfish kidding, but I have a mother-in-law saying the issue, and, um, so, you know, it'd be good to move forward and give them the task, tell them what's their thoughts and how the best assesses it.
Do you have any more comments?
Um, the other comments, I think.
Portch.
A good porch. Uh, they're, no, well, they're discussing it already in the, you know, I, that was one that I was torn on personally, where, you know, there was good reason why they differed on porch enclosure based on, you know, where the footprint of the building is, the setback, and if you eliminate that, you eliminate the setback concept. So I get that completely, why they chose initially to not, chose in code not to allow closed porches. Personally, I prefer that option, but I don't, I understand it completely where they came from, so, you know, we'll see, they're discussing it together, so.
They are, they are. It's, it's one of the items that's numbered, you know.
So, I mean, if it comes to a situation I'm sure we wanted to have, but I, but I don't feel like they're wrong in their thinking.
And as you pointed out, just so there's no sense that anything's been swept under the rug, as you pointed out at the last council meeting, the agenda of the planning commission wasn't published prior to the planning commission. I don't know that they ever published their agendas, but at this point, I think we're asking them to.
Oh, they don't, but there should be nothing on it. We don't know anymore, that was a problem.
Oh, I see. Okay. So I guess we're asking them now to make sure they have a agenda.
It's good, yeah.
Based on that, that concern, you expressed, which I think is a good idea. And, and my understanding is from them, is that they didn't make any decisions about the items, they just, they opened them up, they, they started thinking about them, but they haven't decided on anything yet. So if, in case anybody here is, wants to make comment to planning commission about any of the items that are on that list, they have not made decisions, they're just, they're still, they're still thinking on it. You want me to go back to public comment?
Is that a lie?
Um, sure. Now, we have, no, of course, of course, we have, we're not so formal that we're going to do that, but, but we just, we, just so you know, like, we're, at this point, we're just waiting for their recommendations, so you might want to comment to that.
Then we'll respond. Oh, yeah. I don't know that, I don't know that we'll be talking to them.
Wait, wait or comment now, whatever you want.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, um, I would like to ask you as, you know, the, not, I would like to ask Borough Council to consider all, I know they're, they're putting the requests into categories, and one of the categories is we're not going to consider it. And I, when I, I was there at that meeting, and they had the trash can, and they actually said, we're not going to consider that, we're not going to, they, they actually had, were deciding on some during that meeting. Now, it's probably a preliminary decision, but I have a feeling that most of those will probably stay that way. I would like to ask that Borough Council look at all the different categories, including the trash bin, um, especially in light of historic preservation, or at least hold the, hold those items until we start discussing historic preservation, because some of them might be, uh, you know, important to revisit at that point. So that's my request.
Yeah, and so absolutely, all those items, really, it's not like they're going to sunset. They're just going to stay on until next spring, and then they'll, they'll come, they'll still be there, they'll come up again. So at some point, after they've been looked at a few times, they'll sunset unless somebody says, hey, I still want that, unless someone in the community says, hey, I still want that on the list. But this first round, we're not going to have any of them sunset. Okay, we're just going to keep them alive because, so that we're dwelling, all living with these plans, okay?
Okay.
I was like, I'd add, there's, I mean, you know, structures, everything's coming from the planning commission through the committee to council, but if I'm not mistaken, there's still an opportunity for any individual council member to say, I'd like this, or I'd like that, it doesn't, it's unlikely it'll come to fruition, because there's, you know, a structure that is mostly followed, but there's no reason why it can't be brought to the table. If it's not vetted out, though, likely they're not happening, but everything is there, so, you know, you continue to make sure that you're an advocate for the concerns you have, and, you know, because one area, it's not agreed on, and probably at this table, it might not be agreed on, it's still something that I urge you to, you know, stay thought of, because, you know, new views on everything and new information, and we constantly come to that.
Um, and I would also add that the process that council used in sort of the first round of issues, the form-based code issues that were controversial on the planning commission, and that was any, any item that was voted on like 4-3, we, that, you know, like three planning commission members thought was significant, for example, the porch issue. The council did look at it and decided to go with the planning commission recommendation. I don't know, I can't remember, because my, I have a poor memory, whether or not there were items where the council said we're going to go in some other direction than the planning commission recommendation, I don't remember if we did.
We kind of worked, to get there, we kind of worked it through on, on the, well, y'all went, we got to a limited level on it, as opposed to, or the apartment. Those things kind of came out through the, through the discussion level before it was presented as an ordinance, because once it's presented within the ordinance or as an ordinance amendment, there's a lot of weight on that, both expense of advertising, expense of legal, expense of time, so you try to get as much of that negotiated at the table before it gets to the ordinance announcement or advertisement, because if you change it then, you have to go back to ground zero. And so, you know, on Norbert Avenue, that was one area that was negotiated here at the table essentially, and with, I don't know, they wanted apartment buildings in certain areas, and that was something that some of us did not want, and it was recognized. So, you know, there was a lot of compromises within it, it didn't reach some of the compromises other people, you know, would have liked, myself included on some things, so, you know, I guess the only I can say is, now that it's in action, we're seeing, we're seeing a significant issue on one particular case, you know, that's a concern, but, you know, the only thing we're, we're still stuck on that was brought to the table to be reviewed and is now off the table, according to Aaron, is the idea of checking build outs and to see where, you know, what could potentially happen in a fuller way during the discussion, you know, towards eventual amendments, but at this point, you know, Aaron doesn't want to pursue us spending the time or money about doing that, and so that's, that's a challenge, because that was something we intended to do, and we're not doing. Things change, though, so, you know, I'd like to say to him, spend the energy and time to do that, that's a decision that the whole table has to decide on.
Last thing, the build outs isn't important to do, so I guess people know.
This will be the last public comment. You want to, this will be the last public comment that we're going to go to the end of this. What, what? You're here for the rec board.
Rec board.
I'm not sure where they're meeting.
No, they're meeting.
They're definitely meeting at 7:30. You're just, I think you're early.
Oh.
You can join our meeting.
No, I got to trust me, I got things I got to finish out here, got, get these kids picked up and pulled.
Okay, see you later.
And that's one thing I've asked about, is so we actually know what we're, you know, what it could look like, so people in the community.
Sure, sure, that's the purpose for, for build outs.
Right, so if we know if we're going to add 25 units somewhere, do we want 25 units in that neighborhood?
Exactly. That's the purpose for, for the build outs.
Right.
Okay. Um, Sean, do you want to go with, do you want to have a longer conversation?
No, I'm just confused. Are you saying that the build outs is like, you're not?
That, we're not doing that at this point.
So, so that means that's sort of, the, any questions or concerns about build outs is that sunsetted, as you said? I mean, is that not, because I have a concern that there could be, you know, like about 24 residences in a block in my house, and I'm going to build out.
That's a valid concern, but what, what I'm saying has been decided, and I don't agree with it, but it's decided, I have to recognize that there is a mechanism that we have to follow, is that the, a time and energy that would be spent towards doing multiple build outs or specific build outs even, is that was intended to happen during the process, after the process for the view, has been decided that it's not going to be done. Is that accurate?
Well, I, I think what is accurate to say is that the planning commission did, they did design the zones, okay, and we actually went against their recommendation on South Norbert Avenue, but we maintained all the other zones, and the zones were done with the, with the knowledge of what could be done in those zones. So they, for example, every zoning code in the country requires that some, that you'd be able to do pretty much every building type somewhere within the municipality, that is, you know, like, you have to, for example, provide a place to build apartments, you have to provide a place to have adult bookstores, which don't exist because of the internet, but, but you still have to have a place in town where you would allow that. So if the planning commissions, my understanding of planning commission is they said, well, this is, these zones are where we're going to allow it, and we're not going to allow it in other zones, and that's how, and so there was, the build out, I guess, there was some, there was definitely, it's not, they didn't do full build outs, illustrated build outs, but they did study the implications and the impact of those, of those rules in each and every one of those places. So, it's not like, it's not like they didn't think about it.
Well, they did, it wasn't enunciated, is the concern I think that people have, is, you know, quick, and, of course, we're focusing on all that, but there's other blocks that people have concerns about, but.
Well, people have concerns about North Norbert Avenue, they have a lot of concerns about Essex Avenue, we would lose old homes there, and, you know, and I, I guess I defer to the planning commission's recommendation on this, and I, because I, I think that's, they've been able to think about it, drill down into it to the extent that I have not, and I don't think any of us have been able to, you know, detail that way.
No, but I guess I count on, to someone who made a vote on this, and others count on, feedback to the, to the Borough Council is, you know, some of the density issues that come up, you know, what, what specific density could occur in any particular block with those type of zoning changes, and if they gave, if they gave a thought to it, that you're implying, certainly wasn't enunciated in a specific way that if we do this on this block, we could then have an additional 20 to 40, you know, residential units and traffic that comes with that, so.
Okay, but it's in the law.
Oh, it's in the law.
It's in the, and I, I mean, I read it, I knew what the impact would be, and I believe Charlie, I mean, I know, in fact, I know for a fact that other council members understood the impact, and they did, they voted for understanding that, yes, along Yeldonwood Avenue was the potential for more residences than are currently there, but that that didn't change the overall impact. And I don't even know if that's true, actually, whether it would allow for more residents than are currently there, because there are quite a few already there, but, but in any, in any case, but, we need to move on.
Okay.
And, and Aaron has specifically said, look, we voted, we passed the ordinance, we'll send these questions back to the planning commission, the planning commission's looking at them. If they, if they want to put them in, and I, were they really, were they literally saying we're putting this in the trash can?
Well, not, they didn't use the word trash can.
Oh, they didn't use the word trash can?
I don't know, but, I mean, they, they said we're not doing it.
Maybe they said, maybe they said we're not going to look at these at this time.
No, they said we're, we're not going to do that, we've already decided that it was done. They basically said.
So then that's going to be the recommendation to us. We have the option of saying to the council, what do you guys think? They, they don't want to recommend any change here, what do you think? We could do that, I'm comfortable with that.
But Terry said, if, under the zoning, Terry had said that she, do they really intend, like, in her neighborhood to have all, was it 25, or potentially?
I'm not able to say, because there's so, so many variables, I mean, Aaron's been able to articulate this well, I don't do it as well as he does, but there are a lot of variables at play, there's a lot of issues that arise when a developer decides to tear down what's there and combine properties or separate them, and that, that have to be considered. The SALDO has to be considered, it's, you know, you can't just look at the zoning ordinance on its own to understand, to do the, did you do the analysis with SALDO, or did you just use the?
I, I did the analysis with, using the code and between Windwood Avenue and Essex Avenue.
Well, just, but did you use the subdivision and land development ordinance in conjunction with it? So there's another layer that has.
It does provide.
It does provide other protections, so, anyway, I truly don't, I don't want to, I'm happy to hear more public comment if you have a comment, but I don't have a way of knowledge, having a discussion about it now.
Can you send me an email to direct me to that? Because as it stands right now, from just ordinance 1 to 4, between Windwood Avenue and Essex Avenue, there is a bound build out of 24 more family units, and that's a little much for one block.
Windwood Avenue.
Between Windwood and Maple, where I live on Maple, because there are, there's single homes there, there's my single home next to me, and then there's one other, and that seems a little much, so I'd love to see what restrictions SALDO puts on that.
Windwood and Maple is, is the zone the same as most of Northern?
I live on Maple.
Wind, wind?
And it was, the zoning was raised from R2 to R5, so.
Between Windwood and Maple?
Between Windwood and Maple, that one block, and that has been changed from R2 to R5.
East Windwood Road?
Yes, East Windwood Road to Maple Avenue.
It's the same color as most of South Northern?
Right, orange. But there are houses that have, if you have six feet, you have a. But, but there are houses that have, if you have six feet, you have a front two, two sixty feet, and three thousand square feet per family, you can go up to having five families there, and right now, these are all single homes, and under the old code, it was two families, but there were also parking restrictions, so when they changed the parking restrictions, from two parking spaces had to be on-site, to one parking space had, had to be on-site, plus changed it from two to five, it exploded on that one block, one block, it exploded it to about twenty-four.
Okay, so, so is this, has, did you write, did you include this in the number, in one of the items to be considered by the planning commission? This particular concern of yours?
I believe I did, but I will send it again to make sure.
Well, send it again, and we'll make sure it gets in the queue.
Yeah, because I can't believe that, that was intended.
Understood, understood, send it again, we'll make sure it gets in the queue.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's go on, Sean.
What do you want to know about zoning administration?
If there's anything, if you have nothing to report, if you have no report, it's fine, just if you just don't have anything today.
Well, it was exciting, we, we did, we did, we did have an exciting meeting with, um, Nick Cerelli and Danielle Soltis from Yerkey, so we're working out the logistics of zoning permit review, and who will do what, and how that will be managed on the office side, so we want to, I just want to reaffirm to the public here and virtually, that we intend to preserve every bit of quality customer service that we had prior to changing over to a third-party zoning officer that we did before. That's one of our goals.
Does any change, are you changing application law, or is it?
Yeah, in fact, with the new website rolling out, you're going to see entirely new forms across the whole spectrum of permitting processes, fillable PDFs, and be available electronically online, because, so it's a step towards, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk too much about the new website for fear of stealing Matt's thunder for next week, but, um, it's a, it's a step along a long-term vision we have for increasing efficiency of those processes.
Anything about building permits, that's all together. Anything, any updates from John on the ordinance amendments, the SALDO, chapter one twenty-four, chapter fifty? He's sort of, he's sort of quarterbacking the revisions for this.
I think John's focused right now on chapter sixty-seven, which is public safety prior issue, so I think soon as some hours open up for him to concentrate on these, they'll be, they'll be addressed. I would like to see zoning, the SALDO issue, the, the sort of immediate things that he's been talking about get resolved quickly, and these are all important things, chapter fifty in our building code has to be overall as well, I'd like to see all that teed up for the first quarter of twenty sixteen, no, twenty seventeen, pardon?
Uh, will you come up with any suggestions?
No.
Chapter fifty, by the way, is our building code standards, it's an old, residual part of our code that talks about standards that aren't enforceable, um, I'd like to see those removed, and I'd like to see chapter fifty speak to the administrative processes that, that, that we follow and we enforce, enforcement procedures as well, and get, and eliminate all the things that have caused confusion in the recent past, for instance, like square foot limitations on masonry structures, is actually in chapter fifty, which is, does it happen?
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
So, look at it, in your free time.
Oh, yeah, have you looked at our, you know, we have UCC issues, we use the law around UCC, or, you know, what our agreement with that entity is, or is this something we lean to in the past, a couple of issues, are you familiar?
Uh, yes, very familiar lately with the appeals board.
And so using Lord Marions?
Yes.
We need, if we have any agreement, or the formality of our agreement is, with that, actually, if you want to.
We essentially borrow their board, so when an appeal is made, we handle the administration of the application, the advertisement, the hiring of a court reporter, if the person chooses a spoken testimony hearing type, and we administer it, but we use the three individuals that Lord Marion's appointed to their board to hear the case.
Do we have anything coming up?
We might.
You might? So the last, do you, anything, do you have anything else from your corner of the universe?
From the center of the universe.
No, thank you.
Okay, um, do you have anything more about, because this is just the last item on the, on the list, it's just this form-based code blog, and the only reason I put it on here is because I just, I want to have some resolution about it. I want us to officially sort of just say, like, okay, acknowledge that it's stopped and it's done, and make sure that whatever's online, you know, that they put something, that the county, county put something up and just say, like, here it is, it's historically, you know, you know, it's just.
We administer those URLs, we control the content on those, and we've shared editing rights with our county planner for that particular one.
Okay.
That, that methodology for communicating, um, we're not going to use anymore, because our new web platform allows us to do the same things.
Okay.
So we'll just post on the, the existing blog headings that we have, but, you know, we're not updating them anymore, go to the borough's website for disinformation, because we have a much more beautiful and faster platform to do it now.
Okay, the only thing I want to warn you on, more from administrative and this particular presentation, is any type of product like that we're dealing is, is to somehow put either an expiration date or have them turn a system at once a month, it's, it's checked in on, like, this is, you know, this has not been updated, last update has been September first or whatever, intended next update is, and it could come, maybe November first, every two months, I think it's on November first, nothing new, you know, because we put the, you know, we put this out, the blog idea was a terrific idea at the beginning, and then as things got deeper, and there was other documents that were more relevant, you know, I think people anticipate, there was not really a vehicle to serve that, and money ought to have been needed, as my sense, but, you know, you don't want anything ever being out there, that's just, it's there, and we don't have an end date or an expiration, you know, extend the expiration date, but, you know, so moving to a new website, because they don't want to have old information ever in one page, you have, you need some type of process to check it out.
One of the features the school district uses that I think is pretty good is that they timestamp stuff fairly well. And that might be the way to do that, just so, like, you know, if you're looking at something from twenty-eleven school year or twenty-seventeen, so.
There's nothing, you'll lose so much credibility in a lot, because somebody's citing it, you know, in the news, and it's two thousand eleven.
But I, anyway, I moved it up because it was, it had been ongoing tasks and just topics and a discussion, and I moved it up so that we didn't remove it entirely from the sheet of paper. So, like, we discussed, I'm going to take it off this sheet of paper now, and, you know, the other items will stay on here until they get done, and they change, um, best practices for historic architecture resources, that's hap, that, that revision motion is coming to council about that the next meeting. Just keep having the update on construction, comprehensive plans being done by the county. You want to add something about?
The downtown.
Plan, so should we, we can have on the bottom, let's add it to the bottom.
Yeah, I just, I'd like for, you know, again, if the planning commission has time after, you know, this month's meeting, not this month, because I know there are still fills in there, is there anything else, like, you know, how we want to approach this, what type of timeframe we want to put to it?
Do you know what, do you, is, okay, we're talking about the downtown, the planning for the downtown, so.
Yep.
Do you have any sense of when, when the mission might have come, like twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen?
I don't have a sense.
I don't either.
And that's, and my concern overlaps into two existing things, you know, the one, the one thing is the bigger thing, which is the parking study, of course, you know, we have, if there's a mindset or goal, you know, on the downtown, the great, to just incorporate some of those thoughts into that to make sure that, you know, what if, if that's, you know, what happens, and the parking, what type of train station park. The other, there's actually two other items, and then the, um, obviously, discussion of magnetic development over the parklet, which is, again, more of a semi-permanent, semi-temporary situation, so it probably wouldn't affect this as much, but, you know, that was part of the discussion, how does this fit into the whole plan, so if we're not going to look at it for a couple of years, so be it, but it's something we should decide. And then the last thing, something that the borough brought up, that I started doing a little bit on, which is the train station, because what's going to happen in the next two years is we're going to have a ticketless, and probably we'll have a, a station without the person working there, and I talked to somebody at SEPTA about this, and they have different ideas what they might be doing, they may have it monitored, you know, and open, or something, they may also shutter it, they have not really come to a clear conclusion on what they'll do once they have the tickets, that, that means the ticket master there, and so that affects, you know, what happens with that. Billy would have this, you know, actually, that's part of the whole downtown planning, so I want to stay ahead of the curve. And I don't want to take, I don't want to run rogue and take the initiative of working with SEPTA, I think, you know, I've got to get contact now, it's something we should expand upon, you know, what direction the council or the planning commission thinks we should try to do so we can initiate those conversations well early, you know, we need to get funding, we need to work on that, you know.
I'd like to see a historical reconstruction of the station that was there when I was a child, on this side of the tracks, was torn down. The other side was torn down a long time ago, first, way long ago, but there was, like, a wood and shed, it's a lot like the one.
No, I never seen the picture.
A lot like the one in Windwood, on the, on the outbound side. The outbound side was simpler, the inbound side's always had this, the ticket office, and they were more complicated, more extensive buildings, but the inbound side was just the shed, ad one.
And all those things we, we can look at, we just need to context and look at it within, that's what I'll be up there, so, you know, that's why I'd like to start this, and, you know, if that's something we want to do, it sounds great.
Maybe we can get money from Google. Anyway, if I'm, I just want to make sure I got you correctly, that we're talking about the station area plan, that the planning commission looked at the station area.
Yeah, exactly, okay, well, we've been, I mean, I know there's been a lot of talk about that, how it fits into the context, the gateway.
Where do you think this whole topic lives of the council, and does it go to the committee, is it just sort of, is it going to be off? How does it, how does, state at council level, that sort of topic, SEPTA, the station?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's really a building, I'm not sure if it's really a building, it's only, I'm not really sure if it's in public works, because I'm not sure if it's in property.
Exactly, that's why, somebody's going to move it forward, I don't want to look around each other and all say, all right, we're done. So that's why, because we kind of oversee the planning commission through our committee, and, you know.
I like that idea.
They're there to look at it, but.
Why don't we, why don't we, like, sort of write up a, let's write up a paragraph, we can work on it together, a paragraph, and then give it to them and say, like, when you have, and give it to council.
Give it to council, see how it is assigned.
And then say to the planning commission people, like, when you guys have time, like, start thinking.
I mean, they're all anxious, I think.
Bring to us, bring to us, like, their recommendation of what the next step might be, does that suit you?
Yeah, I think we just have to get it on, so.
Does that make sense to you? Okay, so then we'll just call that a day, thanks for doing, your company.
Thanks.